All right, I'd like to bring the town of Wappinger zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Could I have roll call please be?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Cloddy?
Here. Right, first order of business tonight would be the acceptance of the minutes from May 10th, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Good? Everybody good? No changes? No minutes? Do you have a motion please to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so before we proceed, I'd just like everybody to know that we're down one member tonight. He may get here a little later, not sure. Just want to let you know that in that case then for a decision to be made, it would have to be, you know, at least, you know, three, four, two, or one, right? Three, four, and one against. So you would have the option, if you want to roll a dice, I guess, you have the option to postpone or to continue. So just a heads up. If the other member shows up, then that's out of the equation. But just so everybody knows, do we understand that? Okay, good. All right, first order of business tonight is public hearing, appeal number 227753. Erica and Kurt Martin-Cobert seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R-20 zoning district where no accessory structure can be larger than 600 square feet in size. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot by 36-foot garage, 1,080 square feet, and 25 feet in height, thus requesting a variance of 480 square feet, where no accessory structure can be more than 20 feet in height. The applicant is proposing a 25-foot in height structure, thus requesting a variance of five feet. The property is located at 4 Crown Line Drive West and is identified as tax grid number 605603200438 in the town of Wappinger. I have a motion, please open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Do we have Erica and Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, for the benefit of the board and anybody here, just a quick description of what you need and why you need it.
We're looking for a variance for a detached garage, like mentioned before, that is larger than the restriction and five foot higher. We are asking this because we cannot add on a attached garage because we do have an easement that runs right next to the house.
Got you. Now, we were all at the house a couple of weeks ago. Let's see what you wanted to do there. You did mention to us that you might want to slide it forward or?
Yes, and we actually did, and we have new plans, but it did not change any of the variances. So I did talk to Barbara, she said the wetland does not need a variance. We just need a permit. So I do have new plans, I can hand them out if you want them, but it's just a different location, it doesn't change.
And it's not forward of the house.
Correct. It still has the setback from the front.
And you still have the setback for the side.
From the side, correct. Do you want the, I have?
It would be good to have a set.
Yeah.
Because we'll have to change the building permit after tonight.
So then siding it forward the couple of feet that you wanted through them, Barbara's going to put it kind of even with the front of the house?
Yeah, it's even with the columns.
Thanks.
This is so small. What is this, what is your side doing on this? Twenty-seven? Things shrink and they get smaller. And then it gets to 23. They're fine as far as they do not need any additional variance.
So the setback line, is that the column line?
Yeah, they're doing the column and that still gives them 20 feet to the side, which is the code for that zone, and the columns are fine in the front.
Got you. Okay. We were out there, everything out there, you state it out, we had a good idea. I know that as far as the aesthetics or the finishing of the garage, is it going to mirror the house more or less?
Correct. Yeah, so we're doing siding, it's going to match the house.
Right.
Yeah.
Got you. It's a three bay garage. I know the footprint, I know the height, it's 25 feet, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
25 foot variance.
25, 5 foot variance.
I think we determined that the head of the house was, we call it 29 feet, which is very close.
Do you remember? I don't.
I remember being around 29 feet when we measured, yeah.
Razor there, I was trying. So then this would be actually then a little bit lower than the house.
Slightly lower.
Yeah.
What was the reason to move it in line with the column, not the face of the house again? I remember you had a reason, I don't recall what it was.
It was so that the garage itself doesn't go past the end of the driveway, so I didn't want to push it too far. I didn't want to have to make a longer driveway.
I would have taken one driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys have any other questions? Any way?
I don't.
We took a couple of houses too around the area. Anybody in the audience have any questions for this applicant? Questions? Alrighty, and can I have a motion please to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I have a motion then please to deny or grant the applicant the variance? I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. It's not going to create any undesirable change in the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The footprint of variance, Barbara says, I'm sorry, one quick question now. So there's actually two variances that we're granting tonight, right?
So there's the variance for the size, and then there's the variance for the height.
Right. Do we have to address each one independently?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we'll backtrack a little bit. I'm going to make a motion to grant the applicant the variance on the footprint. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, it's not going to create an undesirable change to the neighborhood. The footprint request is substantial, however, not enough to change my decision. There's no adverse effects, or physical effects on the environment, and the difficulty is self-created. As to the variance for the height, I'll make a motion to grant the applicant that variance as well. I don't believe that that can be achieved by any other feasible means. Just looking at the structure and the roof pitch, I really don't think they could change that much to, you know, maybe shrink that down by five feet and, you know, gain exactly what you want to do there. Again, the height, no undesirable change to the neighborhood or detriment to any of my properties. The height substantial, it's not really a substantial request. There's no adverse effects to the neighborhood, and again, the difficulty is self-created. So all that said, on both variance, I make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. Can I have a roll call please be?
I actually have a question on that.
Sugar it in.
Are we able to amend that to include the drainage easement as a factor in giving approval for this? Because typically it would be against this size garage, but you know, because of the easement and inability to attach it to the house, I think that's a strong consideration.
I think that's a contributing factor, so it's good to have it in the record.
Sure, yeah, to understand, are you saying that the?
Is it a condition? No, it's a contributing factor that there's a large drainage issue.
The drainage easement then is basically causing you to put the garage where it is.
It's kind of encumbering you and limiting you to where you could put it.
So in the record, one of the reasons we are rendering our decision is that they are, you know, encumbered by the drainage easement as well.
With Army Corps of Engineers, is the ones that said where the wetlands begin and where the drainage is, is that why we're?
So there's a wetland behind the house. We put, this is a drainage easement to the town. And so this drainage easement allows the water to flow into that wetland.
It goes from the street underneath the yard through a concrete pipe, probably about 80 foot into the street.
So this captures the water for this subdivision or the portion of it, and that's why they can't encumber it with something on it.
Yeah, you can't put a structure in that easement. So again, roll call please be.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Cloddy?
Yes. Okay, so your easements, your variances have been granted.
Thank you.
You're all set.
So just for the record, I'm going to start doing this for the applicants. Now that it's been granted, congratulations. B tomorrow will work on yours and finish it up. It will be given to me, and then I have to change my denial, and it will be brought to the building inspector and put on the top of a very large pile, because you've been here. They will call you when the building permit's ready. Okay? I just want that clarification for the board, because I think a lot of applicants over the years think that once it's granted tonight, that their building permit will be ready tomorrow, and it's unfair to them to think that that's going to happen.
Sure.
So I think that now everyone here understands, I won't repeat it, but I think we need to do that each time, because then they're calling B or the office the next day, and they're granted, they want their permit. So I think just for the public at each meeting, we're going to tell them the process.
And is it possible that the building department would be constructing drawings? So what if we give the house the building department?
So B's right, some applicants come to you first before they pay an architect or an engineer to construct plans, and then the building permit sits impending until you deliver them. If you've already brought the plans in, then they will start to be reviewed sometime later this week. Okay?
Okay. Good luck, Jared. Have a good night. Alrighty.
Bring them into the building department, we'll come to pick up your permit, just so we have it on file for you.
Next item on the agenda tonight is appeal number 227755, area variance. Jorge Luis Moreno and Maria M. Emanez seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R-40/20 zoning district where 50 feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide 24 feet 5 inches for the legalization of an existing 22 by 15.5 foot deck, thus requesting a variance of 25 feet 7 inches. Where 10 feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide 3 feet for the legalization of an existing 8 by 10 shed, thus requesting a variance of 7 feet. The property is located at 17 Peters Road and is identified as tax grid number 635703013029 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion please, open a public hearing?
Make a motion to open public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. So please step up to the microphone, I know how much I love that, yeah. Well, we have a few things to discuss, so. So, you know, when we were at the house, we went out to your house, after you had left, you know, we went and got a tape measure, because some things were just not adding up visually when we looked at your patio and your deck. So we started measuring, because we had your survey, and your survey shows that the rear of your house is about 40 feet and change to the rear property line. The deck is only about 4 feet away from that property line, so your variance is saying that you're 25 feet from your property line, and that's incorrect. You're only about 4 feet.
I'm taking the dimensions and I don't have the idea what.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
You're fine, you're saying you have more.
Okay, thank God.
But, so this is what, so we cannot rule or vote on this tonight because that's inaccurate, right? So everything that you published, you sent the letters to your neighbors and all that stuff, that's not accurate. So you're going to have to redo that, and we're going to have to postpone this again for two weeks to the next meeting, because the distance you have from your rear deck to your property is more or less 3 and 1/2 feet, right? And you're stating that it's 24 and 1/2 feet, which is incorrect. So I think the best thing to do, Barbara, I mean, do we have to postpone or adjourn the public hearing?
I would just reset a new public hearing, and it looks like it's June 14th. For June 14th, B will have to republish, they'll be responsible to pay for the next ad, and B will have to, in the new public hearing notices, you'll have to resend them because it's inaccurate. Anything that's bigger, and this is much larger, your neighbors have the right to know that, so.
Right.
Somebody has to measure it and re-provide the information to the office first and then republish.
Well, we're going to go with 3 and 1/2 feet short of a new survey, because you said it's between 3 and 4, and it is ground level, so that's an extenuating circumstance here. The problem is, I don't know with the language barrier, if you can help, but the survey that you dropped off was from 2012, and at that time you had a very small deck, and our plot plan, you said, "See survey," so we based it off of what was there in 2012. This new deck was apparently built recently, so that didn't show on here, so we had no way to measure, we were measuring by what you gave us. So due to their site visit, they now see that this is no longer, and the deck you built is out into the yard, not far from the property line.
So.
I think you need to have that interpreted.
Does she need to go get a new survey then?
No, she must.
Okay, so the old survey, right? It doesn't have the old patio on.
It has an old patio, it has a small deck, and then a patio walkway going around it, and the rest of the yard looks empty, up just grass or bushes. And now, upon their visit, they have a patio now coming from the house out so many feet, and then the deck extending out into the yard very close to the rear property line. So that's actually what needs the variance.
Is that not what she applied for?
No. Come here a second, so.
Well, she did apply for a variance.
Right.
For the deck, but the measurements from the deck to the rear property line is not accurate.
No, she just submitted this survey from 2012, when there was a very small deck, maybe 10 by 8, right off the house, with a walkway extending still close to the house. So what's there now is not represented on this survey, and there was nothing else given to us to tell us that the deck was actually out into the yard off of a patio.
Do you have a sale pending or anything that this is holding up?
Yes.
Is there an option to remove the deck, store the material, and let the new owner take care? I don't know what their timeframe is.
Like at the noise station?
No, the same. If, because it's holding up the sale, you take the deck apart, tell the buyer this?
Right.
All pieces of the shed that passes?
There's a possible, you would have to speak to your attorney. This happens quite frequently, that a variance holds up the sale. Sometimes if your attorney speaks to the buyer's attorney, they'll put escrow in an account at the closing, that you will get back that money if and when the variance is granted but allows your sale to go through. So not to get into the weeds with it, and we're not attorneys. I would speak to your attorney and ask him, "There are options available to you legally to help you do this right on June 14th, but still possibly close prior to that."
If you want to, you can talk to her.
Yeah.
To talk to theirs. But she needs to come back anyway.
On June 14th. And she needs to republish. If she decides to go forward with it, she needs to republish, repay for another legal notice, the sign has to, the date has to be changed on the sign to June 14th. If she doesn't want to, if you don't want to do that, the other option is to remove the deck and work something else.
Still, we need to address the deck, said.
Excuse me?
See, the shed, yeah, the shed's the second.
The shed, but you know, the problem with that is by telling them that the new people could rebuild it, then the new people have to come in for a variance to put it back, so that's probably not the best idea.
All right. So.
But this is a patio and noise and a deck, because it's not steps, it's not representing nothing.
It's still construction.
Only for the material, right?
Well, you still built a deck. A deck requires a building permit.
Yeah, but that deck is not, is not steps, is not.
Your option then, remove it completely, and we can come out and inspect it, or continue, and then you still have the variance for the shed in place.
Right. Right, we might as well do both at the same time.
And what about the shed?
They would do it at the same time.
At the same time. You don't have to change anything in the publishing for the shed, because those measurements are accurate, but the deck definitely.
I thought we, I thought we talked about that the shed was a.
The public hearing would still have both items.
Correct.
But the measurements on the shed are okay. It would just be to change the measurements on the rear of the deck.
The measurement's accurate.
Five feet, is that?
You think it's 5 feet?
Right.
I think it was 5 feet.
They're requesting.
It's a 3.
Right.
We talked about that. It seemed like it was more like 5 feet.
And that's as a board, if you feel it's 5 feet, we can change that, and that makes it more palatable too. So we'll change the shed to 5 feet.
Are we able to vote on the shed only today?
We could.
Yes.
Would you want us to potentially vote on the shed only, and then you can decide how you want to handle the deck?
Well, we have to know, because B has to publish, so there's time constraints.
Have to make decision now. So you can separate to.
Do you want them to vote on it, or do you want to go back to meeting?
Not today for that decision.
For the shed.
For the shed. What about when the shed?
Well, you need a variance for the shed as well, right? So we can vote on the shed tonight and be done with that, and then the next time would only be the deck that we would have to address. It's your choice.
Or we could do them both.
Do them both next time.
What chance I have for the shed?
She wants to know what chance she has for the shed.
For the shed.
Can't tell you that. Wait, I really, really, it doesn't make a difference. I would say just address them both on the 14th.
And I get it in the 14th?
What?
14th.
I can't tell you that either.
We can tell you, you will not get the deck tonight, because the measurements are off, so we can give you that answer.
And what about the shed?
We can't tell you. We have to vote. Well, I can't tell you that.
She just wouldn't vote.
For the shed.
They don't succeed.
Did you get chance to vote?
For the mess.
And then what's not?
Well, those dogs pass the mess forward.
But what's the difference, do we have to vote today for the shed?
All right, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision.
It's your vote, it's your last vote. Just do a vote Monday, next time.
Yeah, but what about my person? I suppose moving Jack and me, right, for the time.
You'll have to do something, and you do have to speak to your attorney.
Okay.
I understand that you're looking to close probably before June 1st. The lawyers can work something out so that both you and the other party can be okay to close, okay? In the meantime, you still have to republish, we've got to get this approved, and that falls on you as the current homeowner.
Okay.
So we're doing both on the 14th?
Yes, I think so.
Then.
So just motion to set a new public hearing.
So officially then, we'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the both variances on June 14th.
Second?
What I need to do now?
Right?
Tomorrow, we do the first public hearing, and we probably don't have anything to buy that was posted yet?
No, we're just, you want?
We're adjourning.
We're just adjourning it to the new public hearing for.
Are you going to put a motion to set it?
Do you want a motion? So make a motion to close, just amend it. Make a motion to close this public hearing, and in that motion, you're setting a new public hearing.
So can I have a motion then, please, to close a public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
Second?
I second it.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. And we'll also then make a motion to set a new public hearing date for June 14th. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so we will see you on the 14th.
So Maria talked to B tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Just to make some changes. So for the record, we're changing the setback for the shed from 3 feet 7 to 5 and 5.
Correct.
And for the deck, we're changing that to 3.5 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight is appeal number 227756, area variance. Chelsea Miratello seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R-40/80 zoning district where no accessory structure can be larger than 600 square feet in size. The applicant is proposing a 44-foot by 21-foot detached garage and a 20 by 8 by 6 extension for a pony barn, total structure of 924 square feet and not more than 20 feet in height, thus requesting a variance of 324 square feet. Where 2.00 acres are needed to have a farm animal, the applicant can provide 1.850 for a small pony, thus requesting a variance of 0.15 acres. The property is located at 62 DiDell Road and is identified as tax grid number 635903385322 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion please, open a public hearing?
Motion, open a public hearing.
Second please?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Please step to the microphone, Chelsea. Just for the record, your name and address.
Yes. My name is Chelsea Miratello at 62 DiDell Road. I'm here asking for, or asking for a variance so I can add an extension on my current garage, which would make it over 600 square feet. The extension will be for a pony barn. I'm also asking for a variance to give me 0.15 acres more than what I can provide of 1.85 to allow having a pony on the property, being that you need 2 acres to have a farm animal.
Got you. Okay, so we were there Saturday, and David, were you there today?
Yeah.
Were you there today? Have you had a good look around, see what's going on in the areas around the properties and everything else? I honestly, I don't have any other questions. I know you answered the questions for us around the property, you staked out the addition, everything looked pretty good. I don't have any other additional questions. Anybody else?
No.
No?
I mean, I guess we would condition this to be a singular pony, like there's no, you're not going to be viable.
I don't have any more right now, just him. Just him so far.
It's a good idea, it's a good suggestion, though. We'll put that as a condition, you know, that it's one pony, just in case you want to, you know.
In case I want to get a few more.
Yeah. Get a couple more. But if there's no other questions, then I can have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, anybody in the audience have anything to speak on behalf of this variance?
My neighbors are here, but they're just here to support.
Moral of support?
How's your name? I'll say your name and address, we don't have a problem with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And she did come in.
Thanks.
You need a name and an address from her.
Oh, your name and address, I'm sorry.
Melanie DeLan Alexander, 68.
That's it.
Melody Lynn Alexander, 68 Dyadel Road.
Got it.
Thank you.
And I don't have a problem with it.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. All right. If there are no further comments, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
So, moved. All right. Can I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant a variance?
Two variances.
The both variances. Yes, two variances tonight.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. Take them one at a time, Barb, so we read them twice, you're saying, right?
Just talk about each one. If you're going to grant each one, you give to each one, but you really should do separate roll calls, because you could deny one.
Sure.
Okay, so, I'll make the, make a motion that we grant the variance, that the requested variance will not produce undesirable change in the neighborhood. And that will be for the size of the structure and for the size of the property for the pony. There is no substantial detriment to be created to nearby properties that Dyadel Road is famous for its horse people. And that includes both, again, the size of the property and the size of the structure. There is a, another feasible means to do this, but I think that it's not something that would be acceptable. You're not, it would be, you'd be able to achieve the benefit of this doing it other ways, making it smaller, but I don't think it's necessary in this. The requested variances are, the first one is substantial, the size of the structure, substantial variance. But the variance for the horse farm size of the property is not, the small variance. And it will not have an effect, or adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood, again, or environmental conditions due to the neighborhood, the condition of the neighborhood itself. Again, that's considering both the size of the property and the size of the structure. The alleged difficulty is self-created.
I was second.
So, have a roll call for the size of the structure, and then have a roll call for the pony, size of the land.
Is that variance number one, if there is no motion?
Correct.
Set more address that I like.
Yeah. So, we'll have a motion to approve the variance for the footprint of the shed. Have a, we have a, one positive vote, and I have a second.
Yes.
And roll call, B.
Mr. Belafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barra?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and then we also then need a motion to grant the variance for the acreage. And we have a positive vote on that. One, can I have a second?
Second.
More favor? Oh, sorry, roll, roll, please, B.
What's that? Singular pony.
Singular pony, yeah. David can listen to that. Right. We have a roll call on granting the variance for the acreage, just do the roll call.
Mr. Belafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barra?
Yes.
And I will say, yes, but we're going to condition that, that you'll only be able to have one pony on the property. So, that being said, your variances have been granted.
Thank you.
That means Ford Mustang has to go.
You heard David's speech.
The Ford Mustang has to go.
Good one.
You bring it over to my...
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good luck, guys.
All right. All right, so, next on the agenda this evening is a discussion. Appeal number 227757, area variance, John O'Sullivan, seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R20 zoning district where 20 feet to the side left yard property line is required. The applicant can provide 11 feet for the legalization of an existing 12 by 21 metal carport, thus requesting a variance of nine feet. The property is located at 19 Sabre Lane and is identified as tax grid number 625802935954 in the town of Wapanger. So, I'm going to guess you're John.
That is correct.
Well, just for the record, state your name and address, please.
John O'Sullivan, 19 Sabre Lane, Wapingers Falls, New York.
Gotcha. And for the benefit of the board and everybody else, just a quick, brief description of what you need and why you need it.
It is a 12 by 21 metal carport, totally open on all sides. And it just has a metal roof, and it's well constructed for both the wind and snow. It's very solid. It would pass any shake test or any rain.
How long's it been on?
Since 2018.
2018. Got it. You know, what we usually do, the board, we like to do, is we like to do a site visit. And we like to visit your home, wouldn't be this Saturday, but would be next, the following Saturday, which would be, anybody?
No, the 4th. That's Saturday.
It's going to be June 4th?
Don't you know when it's...
The, the week, the Saturday before, correct?
Oh, okay. Well, you have three weekends, that's why.
Oh, gotcha. So, yeah, so, the meeting is a little, for the next meeting is a little further out. So, we're going to do a site visit on June 11th around 9:00. We'll be there. If possible, if you could, if you could identify in some way, shape, or form the property lines that we're measuring to, it could be a painted line on or a stake in the ground. Is there any way that you can identify that?
There's a tree line, and there's the driveways that are adjacent to one another with maybe about a one-foot separation.
Okay.
So, I think it's pretty well-defined, just by visual observation.
Gotcha, okay. And you'll, that being the case, then, will you be able to be there that morning?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, we'll still do that, site visit on 6:11 around 9:00. And we'd like also then to do is to set a public hearing date for that following zoning board meeting, which would be the 14th. So, June 14th, then, you'll be on for a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? And anybody else have any questions?
Just in terms of locating that property line, you know, it's just important to make sure that the dimension that we're giving to the neighbors and putting in the newspaper is, is accurate, you know? Otherwise, you'd have the same issue as, you know, that second woman there with the, with the deck. So, that 11 feet, you should be sure that that's exactly what you need, or, you know, less.
I mean, could it be a foot off, maybe, but no more than that? I mean, the properties are established. Driveways have been there since the homes were constructed in 1970.
If it's a foot off, and you go to sell, and there's a survey, then you're going to be back here.
You could have a problem. You don't have a survey on the property.
I have the standard one that is on file here.
Okay. All right. And that'll identify probably the distance from the house to the property line.
Yeah. I mean, they're very standard, 27 feet from the house to the property line.
If you have that, you know, we can use that to then identify from the house exactly where the property line is. And then, we can then measure from your structure to the property line. So, but David made a very valid point. If we, if we were to grant the variance and some, for a future date that would turn out not to be accurate, it would cause a problem for you. You don't want to, you don't want to do this two times, right? You want to do this one.
Right. And if I'm really, really on the high side, but...
So, I just have one question.
Sure.
By your plot plan, you say it's 12 feet wide.
Yes.
You're saying you're 11 from the side, that's 23, and you have five feet between that and the house, that's 28, but your survey says you have 27. I think that's the question of the one foot.
Okay.
So...
I have to do it probably in inches.
So, tomorrow, we won't maybe go and just measure from your house out 27 feet, and then from that mark, measure back to the carport. So, maybe it's 12, maybe you have, you know, maybe it's 12 feet, maybe you have six feet between the house and the carport, but you've got to find that foot. And it's easy enough to just measure from the side of the house, 27, and then do the, figure the math in the middle. And then just let B know tomorrow, and then if it's truly 11, then she can give you the public hearing notices, and if it's off, she can correct it for you. Yes.
It'll be, I'd say, just in inches, it's like 11 feet something or 10 feet.
Yeah, but this is kind of an exact thing.
Okay, gotcha.
So, I'd rather you tomorrow take the time to measure out. At least you have a starting point, your house, you know you only have to go 27 feet, and then figure the math and just let B know. You may still have 11, but I think it's better than waiting for our board to go out and realize you had, you needed a larger variance, because as they said, you'll be in the same spot where we have to republish. Okay? So, for your benefit.
Yeah, B for your benefit, for sure. Okay. So, that being said, then, we still set the public hearing date for June 14th.
Okay.
And we'll be out there on the 11th, but we'll straighten out that measurement before we do it.
Right.
Okay?
All right.
You're free to go.
Very good.
Take your sign.
John.
John, take your sign.
Oh. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda. All right, thank you.
Well, we have, we have extra time, so, let's see. Let me just look at a calendar, because when we have these free weeks, we love them, but it was an issue. So, you were going to meet on the 14th, so put it up by June 5th. That's more, enough time. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session.
A second.
You guys, there's one meeting tonight, Doc.
Sorry.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
You have a second?
Second.
More favor? All right, so, moved. So, should we go to...
Follow me, I will let you in and then leave you.
You're going to stay here?
No, you're going to follow me and go in.